And they're all gone now and there's no paper in anybody's office that departed, no paper. And all of it's gone. And there's also been a citizen who saw some boxes being dumped by a department employee. So again, some things that, there needs to be a deeper dive on most of these issues. And some that I've talked about initially, again, better policies in place to make sure that these kinds of things can't happen in the future. And Mr. Mayor, take any questions if anybody has any.
I know I have questions, but that was a lot that I guess. I'm going to just to kind of put some of these questions into thought.
Heath, while you're doing that, I might fall with me, is it Miss Luther back there? I don't have my glasses on.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask them a question so that I can ask you a question, if that's okay. Mr. Rollins, there was, there's a phone that is owned by the town, it's a phone line, if I understand, and that phone has messages on it that belong to the town. What, did we have access to all the messages or did some of those messages, are they inaccessible because some of them were using iMessage? And from what I recall, there might be some discussion that those are not accessible now. Do we know?
I am currently in custody of that phone, that was the town manager's phone, it's in my desk drawer. To be quite honest, I don't use that phone, but we still have custody of it. But to my knowledge, there was no record, so there you are, that were on it. But this is the first really question about that phone, but maybe we'll see what they answered.
So I do not have an iPhone, so forgive me if I'm saying something wrong. From what I understand, if you have an iPhone, you can have what's called an Apple ID. And if you have an Apple ID and you're texting from one Apple product to another Apple product, it goes into the cloud and your, with your Apple ID, it's tied to your Apple ID. Because the former town manager's Apple ID had both his business and personal information, he took the Apple ID with him. And unfortunately, that means that those text messages are with him as well in the cloud, with his, tied to his Apple ID. We do not have access to that Apple ID, so we do not have those records.
Would it be a good idea for us, the town, to try to get those messages that are town-related, that were part of the Apple ID, that he used on company property?
Absolutely, and, you know, people are thinking that governments are big and bad because they won't let you do personal things on your assets, the town's assets, computers, telephones, whatever. What people don't understand is that anything that you put on a public device that is personal, it now becomes public record. And so it's really as much about protecting the employees as it is about protecting the town's assets. And so, again, yes, you, you have to discern what is, what those texts are about. You have an obligation to discern what's there and was it important or not important. And until you get that, and the only way to get it may be through a subpoena.
That's what was my understanding, I wanted to make sure that's what you thought as well.
So we just subpoenaed the Apple ID so that we could get into there?
You have to ask your attorney, I assume that's the way it would go down?
So we would have to subpoena, if we subpoenaed the Apple ID, then we could get into the phone to see what's personal versus what's town and pull the town stuff so we could see what those messages were?
I'm not sure that that's the best approach, there are probably several ways that we can go about that. Definitely have to have some kind of action, court action to recover.
The only other thing I wondered is there, because it is public, is there, through a forensic IT audit, can they recover? And that would be the easiest way. If that can be done through a forensic IT audit and recovers that way, that would be your easiest way. Because again, anything on that public device is yours.
You were talking to earlier about the personnel files containing the information about the vacation time. And of course, we see some of that information here in front of us. If we would like to see the information from the personnel files that backs up this letter, do we have access to that?
I think you would, but coming into the office and sitting down with the town manager and making sure that, you know, it's, again, controls to make sure nothing gets removed or nothing is added.
I understand, yeah, because I know there is always concern about, you know, personnel files are confidential, but as the people-
Councilman.
As a council member, I'm not so sure where that, it's kind of gray, I don't understand, I don't remember where that went.
Mr. Hoffman?
Who?
I don't understand the question.
He wants to know if, as a council member, if he wanted to look at some of the information, like I said, there was nothing in one of the employee's file that shows, in her personnel file, that shows that she went from part-time to full-time and was able to accrue on that vacation. Wants to know if he wants to come behind me and check some of those things out, my facts. Can he look in her personnel file as a council member?
The manager's control of the personnel file.
Well, what I said was, I didn't know if under the manager's supervision that they could sit down together, only you can answer that question.
I think that they can look at certain parts of the file, not disciplinary action, if there was any, but as far as pay and benefits, that is public records that could be requested even from the public. I mean, it's quite well-known what the manager makes. In every town, it's publicized all over the newspaper, so those parts of the personnel file, I think you could absolutely look at, but-
So, hold on, Mr. Luther. You said payday and benefits are public record?
Salary is not confidential. And salary includes pay-
But that's not what we're looking for.
Well, I can tell you that the Charlotte News and Observer published all of our salaries in state government every year.
I'm a teacher on the side.
Yeah, it is, it is.
That's good to know, because during that period of time, there was a little, it was made sort of confusing on what we could know, because I do believe we inquireed some about the vacation time.
Well, and I think that the records that I looked at were timesheets, and there is a record of what you accrued, what you earned, what you've used and what's left over. And I'm not, that's not a personnel record, that's not in the personnel file, that's in the town, in their, I would say, human resources, maybe payroll, module or payroll records. Y'all use QuickBooks, so I'm not sure what's manual and what's automated.
Because during that time, I think somebody here, maybe someone could say, did anybody get asked about vacation time?
I did, I did send an email asking.
And did you get any sort of response that, I don't mean like a response, but a response that actually told you what it was? And-
And if I could add, those letters that you were asking about, they do not have anything that's personnel confidential related, so you could see those letters.
You also said on page six that a, what are you talking about, after the person had turned in their notice, I believe, is that what that was, let me see.
Yeah.
She turned in her notice and then after that, there was a room book, and we were able to obtain a partial refund. Is that the new administration that was able to get that refund? Is that something that happened? Mr. Rollins, is that you that was able to get that refund? Or?
So what happened was, so I'll say, her resignation letter is, there was no initial resignation letter that we can find. But there was a subsequent resignation letter that said her previous resignation date. She stated her resignation date was May 17. The charges confirmed by the hotel were done on May 21st. It was paid in June.
On the former finance officer, I said?
Yes.
She took in a credit card bill from you and paid?
It wasn't a bill, she logged into the system and just paid the charges that were to date, there was no statement yet, the statement wasn't ready until the next day.
So that's why the approved, that's when we all was paid?
Yes, so when-
So she paid that with the knowledge that she's paying for somebody who wasn't even there?
Who had resigned.
Who had resigned, yes, and was no longer employed at the time on June 10th, yes. And it was booked for the future, which was August, so it should have, had it been a legitimate charge, it would have been charged prepaid, but it wasn't, it was expensed. And so what happened was a credit came on the credit card, and when we researched the credit, we found out that the hotel was a no-show fee, so they kept one night no-show, but refunded the rest of the charges. And it was confirmed that the reservation was made after the termination date, or the resignation date. Now, the only thing we have, based on that resignation date, is a subsequent resignation. So if that resignation date was correct, then it was booked after the resignation. If that initial resignation date was incorrect, then the town policy says employees are not to be paid their accrued vacation if they do not give two weeks' notice. So then two weeks' notice would not have been given, and this employee would not have been due their vacation, so obviously that's a fact.
We don't have that resignation letter?
Not the initial one, I don't know if it was-
I thought, weren't we told that they were all like slid under the door on that Sunday?
We were told that.
So are any of those resignation letters in the files?
Yes, but for this individual, she claimed that she gave one date and that she changed her date to move up her last day. But her initial resignation, there's no record of it in the personnel file. And the personnel file, all the pages are numbered, so we have ensured that no pages are missing from the personnel file, but there is no record of this person resigning on the date that they claim to have resigned. And those-
Thank you, Ms. Luther.
Yes.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who, this was paid on a town credit card?
Yes.
And I know, because I had to go to the bank to help you get credentials to do, because I was just a check signer, so I know every single, not, I'm not going to say every single, but there were several employees that still had outstanding credit cards or they were still open, but not being used. And we make sure all those are closed. So is there in a policy that as soon as your resignation is turned in, that it is taken? Or is that something we need to do going forward?
That is not in a current policy, you can create either a policy or best practices for going forward. As we've discussed several times in the past, a lot of your policies are majorly outdated because they go back to 2005, 2012, 2013, '11. They're majorly outdated, they need to be updated. And your current town manager and I have discussed it, your current finance officer and I have discussed it, and they are, they're working on it, but there's a lot to work on. So those are things that need to be put in place, procedures, policies, changes, yes, a lot of things need to be spelled out. And there should be, whenever anybody resigns, there should be an exit process, which should include an exit interview, should include retrieval of certain documents, retrieval of keys. And we know for a fact that that process was not followed, because I'm one of the high school at the county hall for 10 years. So, so we know for a fact that those things were not being followed and need to be followed. Proper exit interviews and exit processes.
And you were there the last two days, weren't you, at the town hall before the former manager left?
Yes, I was there Friday and Monday, it was last two days.
And you were there to help transition, right?
Yes.
Waiting for the passwords. They knew you were there to get the passwords.
Yes, that was blatant and it was stated-
But again, I will tell you that Graham Creach says, just because somebody tell Brad, give me your passwords, or hand these off to somebody else, until this council were to put together a letter or put together a resolution saying this is the person, then Graham Creach was probably not going to give them up.
And let me just clarify, it wasn't Graham Creach that was supposed to give me the passwords, it was the town manager?
I don't know who the town manager should give them to.
He had the passwords and he sent them to Graham Creach instead of giving them to me. And the, and it was, that was the intent of why, it was supposed to be a handoff at the end of the day, that's what was understood, that's what was communicated to the manager, that's what was communicated to me. And I even stated that blatantly, that I was not going to be in town the next day, which was the first day that he would be gone, and that I needed access to the systems because I had previously scheduled family matters that council knew about before I ever even came on board. So it was stated that I was going to be out of town, I needed access to the systems and I needed the passwords before I left that day. And the IT vendor and the town manager were in there when it was stated, and I was not told otherwise. And I also wasn't told that the-
Again, I would not, and I would expect my IT company not to do anything but-
So they have a letter?
And even to an attorney, just for sake, keep it there and why you went to an attorney?
But, Ms. Woods, you said you don't think that, just so it helps us understand that the manager should have given it over to Miss Luther, would you talk about that?
Because, so if you have two people that just want to trade passwords or whatever, this board has to have control of what your IT vendor does. And so, again, Graham Creach tells me that they were not handing anything over without some document from this board.
And they shouldn't have, that's accurate, they should not have. And that's why this is not on the-
And so the town manager going out the door says, give me the pass, somebody says, give me the passwords, I don't know, they should have, without any document that Graham Creach was comfortable with. There was a point where we did a letter, and it said, finally, it was after the fact, I don't know how much after the fact, but-
It was the next day, so the town, so Graham Creach informed me that they had instructed the manager what to do for the transition. I asked for documentation of their instructions to the manager. I did not get any documentation, what I did get was an offboarding checklist, because apparently they had resigned and I was not told. So they were there on site that day to offboard themselves pretty much, to get everything ready for a new IT vendor. I was not told this, I was not made aware of this, and I was, and-
Should we even make it aware, Ms. Woods, that they had resigned? Because nobody can be that aware of the time that they had resigned.
I, I mean, certainly they should, I, I'm going to say this, you're town manager, and thank goodness you have the one that you have. I have a nice reputation across North Carolina, and I have worked with him on one other unit of government, I know him, know other than that, I know his reputation. But again, you're putting all this information, the access to the server, access to computers, passwords, you're putting this under one person. There has to be, there has to be an awareness of council that this person, this administrator, is going out the door, and here's our plan to make sure the new person and the right person, it shouldn't been, I, the new interim is going to ask the old interim, again, is there clashes, are issues, is there whatever? It should be coming now from the council, this is what's going to happen, and the instructions should have come to you, Graham Creach, and then this would not have happened.
So create a policy, procedure going forward where if we had this transition again, there is a duty to do X, Y, Z.
Well, we did ask for the passwords way ahead of time, and at that point-
And Graham Creach said they got a law-
No, no, the, ask the manager for it, and at that point, maybe it would have been ideal if the manager would have said, we need a letter to give it to you, or we need a letter to give it to the next person. I think it should have been between you and the IT vendor. Okay. We weren't allowed to talk to the IT vendor.
Well-
Yeah, you are, you-
Well, we were told only the manager was allowed to talk to IT vendor, we were not allowed to contact them throughout.
But you've made it very clear that we need to make sure that's very, good going forward.
The IT vendor works for too.
May I interject, Ms. Woods? The current policy that I've put in place on behalf of the board that I've instructed Graham Creach, certainly it's your pleasure to change it, it is, is that North Carolina state law says you must have a manager and a clerk at all times, period, no events or butts about. You fire Mr. Twig Wallace today, you make Jim Hoffman the manager, you do a resolution signed by the clerk with your town seal, they will take that and they will give him every password there is in the kingdom. Right now, I'm the holder of every password, I'm the master password holder. That is the policy I've installed for the time being. Again, it's your pleasure to change it, but that's the proper way it should be done, the way it was done in my last town, and the way I've been trained. But you're required to have a manager at all times. The moment you name an interim manager, and you have to do that by vote with a resolution, your clerk puts the town seal on it, presents that to the IT company, says, this is our new manager. So that's what's in place right now. So just want to make sure to rest people there, the passwords are under control right now, I have them and that's the instructions I've given to them.
And of course, they've got a time period, the way, does it appear as though that the way everyone left and the manner that they did and the timeframe that they did, did it seem intentional to handicap the town?
That's my question, was there malicious intent?
That is a hard thing to prove, and I've had a conversation with the SBI, that is a hard thing to prove.
The SBI?
Was there a duty for-
State government?
Was there a duty for the manager at the time when he knew the clerk would not be there? Because the clerk is one of the state required positions. Should he have taken any steps to secure somebody before he left?
Sure. I mean, I read your policies, it's in there what his responsibilities are, yes.
Did we find any evidence that he was going to fill that spot, or trying to fill that spot anyway?
I have not looked.
Thank you.
So based on the amount of money that was paid out, should have been paid out, is there a way to get that back? Is that luck, or what's the next step?
I think for the federal withholding taxes, the employee is to their best interest to give that money back and let you pay the federal government, because if you don't, you're going to get penalized, they're going to get penalized, and so that's to nobody's benefit. All the other stuff, the vacation time that the person was paid, I mean, you could ask for it, I know that how much money it is, does it create more ill will? And if they say no, then it's going to cost you more to get it back than it was. So I think probably a true picture of what was going on, and then make a policy, make sure this kind of stuff doesn't happen again, and also bring into your attention, there might need to be a deeper dive in some of the other kind of transactions. Again, the thing that impressed me most about working with Mr. Rollins is that he has not only great town manager skills, but he understands a lot of the financial, and I've found that that's been probably the handicap of a lot of our smaller cities, is that the town manager has no idea about finances and what the numbers mean and budget and whatever. And the finance officer can be in complete control of all the numbers. The fact that Mr. Rollins can, in fact, one of the first things he asked me, he said, get me a report of how much cash I got at the other town that he was at, because he could find anything that told him how much cash the town had. So again, he's got a great working knowledge of financial operations of the town as well as the operational type operations of the town.
And you're talking about deeper dive, really your investigation was very limited ones, you were there just for one day?
Well, I was there for one day, asked for quite a lot of records and verified the things you see here.
So if we want you to look into more, you'd be more happy to do that?
Your forensic audit, IT audit is the most pressing, and that my firm does not do first.
And do you-
Do you have one you can recommend to do the IT?
I can get you one.
And then I guess the other one is do the forensics on the phone?
But I think they would handle that too.
They do, okay.
Okay. Ms. Woods, based on your investigational assessment-
I love the way you put that.
Reading through your summary report is quite detailed. Is it accurate in what I'm reading that there was no paper records left in administrative offices?
That's exactly right.
Based upon your investigational assessment, reading through the summary report, the access to IT systems and passwords was upheld?
Graham Creach says no.
That's a cheap stuff.
Based upon your investigational assessment, you're saying that 119,000 gigabytes of data is missing?
There is a decrease, yes, January to June. Now, did the former town manager have that many personal files? Because they removed a lot, the court, it took him almost a day to remove a lot of things. And obviously, Graham Creach attested to in my discussions with them, but I mean, you're told, he has that much. So again, we won't know until there's a forensic IT audit on what was removed.
You have mentioned an IT forensic audit a few times now, what will that provide us?
It'll, they'll be able to recover the data that was deleted, and then you'll have an opportunity to discern which is town data that needs to be restored or reserved, and what is just personal data that belonged to the person.
Ms. Woods, your report mentions that this document outlines the searchings, allegations, findings, and the recommendations. You have put in your summary multiple times a violation of policy, is that true? That policy is not-
I believe, I believe that the policy that paid out accrued vacation for one employee who did not have extenuating circumstances, I believe that is a violation of the policy as I described it. Again, there was a financial hardship when that policy was put in place, and that's where the words extenuating circumstances came into play back in 2013. And so, given the recent minutes around the 2013 change and amendment to the policy, for sure, the former town manager's payment of accrued vacation is a violation of the policy.
So-
And then, the payout of the 14 hours to the three employees, six hours of petty leave and eight hours of personal time off is a violation of both of those policies.
And the full-time slash part-time, that'd be an issue to you, right?
Well, you know, how that happens, you'd have to go investigate how that happened, was it intentional? Was it just, I put everybody in at full-time accrual and so this person just accidentally got in there at full-time accrual? You'd have to do a deeper dive to determine if that was intentional or an accident.
I guess it's difficult to do these investigations a little bit when there's nobody around who was there at the time, right?
And the situation there was the person had accrued 200 and some hours by then to 23, but because they were part-time, the limit is 30 days, and if you multiply their part-time hours times 30, it comes to the 144. So although they had accrued more, they weren't entitled to be paid out that more, they should have rolled into sick. Then, then their increase, their accrual went up, and that may have been for longevity purposes in terms of how long they've been with the town. But the key was, it should have rolled and it shouldn't have been paid out, because they were part-time at 12:31, they were getting accrued part-time at 12:31, and they were part-time at 12:31 times their 30 days.
And from what I understand, the place was pretty much bereft of documents. Ms. Dockery, was there any documents around for planning, is that planning, nothing you saw?
And I would like to clarify that it was administrative, not financial, financial records were there, but the, it was, the administrative records were ones.
Ms. Woods, this is a lot of information, I still feel like I need to do a digest- Ms. Woods, this is a lot of information, and I still feel like I need to do a digest of after this, after this meeting. However, I could be candid with you. From the synopsis of this report, the inappropriate accruals, payouts, and the lack of council approval, and the transparency and communications that's outlined in this report, do you feel that there's potentially a desert?
You won't know until you get a deeper dive. I will tell you that the feeling that, in talking to staff that are there now, no, the answer to the question is no. But you won't know until you do a deeper dive.
Okay. Are you able to ascertain, based upon what you have seen so far, that there was collusion?
I know what I believe, but I can't prove, and I know what I can prove. I can't prove that there was collusion.
And you are recommending a deeper dive?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have three questions. Oh, will you do them?
Yes, ma'am.
Does any of these findings, do any of them reflect on the previous audit?
Probably not. And I'm glad you asked that, Ms. Robinson, because I will say this, when you get your financial statement audits, if you read the opinion, it says, "These numbers don't have any big errors in them. The numbers on these pages, the notes to the financials do not have any big errors in them." And to describe it to you, I will tell you that the state of North Carolina's financial statements are accurate, plus or minus $900 million. If that gives you a sense of what your financial statement audit opinion is, what it's looking for is financial statement audits for creditors. What is your financial health? How much debt do you have? What are your liabilities? And will we loan you money?
So does a perfect audit...
There is no, there is no perfect audit. You can have a clean opinion, but there's no such thing as a perfect audit.
So a perfect audit wouldn't, this doesn't reflect a perfect, there's no such thing as a perfect audit?
There's no such thing as a perfect audit, and they're looking at your numbers. Is cash fairly stated? You say you got $700,000 in cash, and the auditor is attesting that you really do, plus or minus some number. Do you have this amount of receivables? Do you have these assets that belong to the town? The auditor's opinion is saying, "I've looked at their numbers," and yes, they do, plus or minus some number. And then you get down to the bottom line, your fund balance and on your government-wide financial statements. It shows you the financial position of this town. And the auditor is saying, "Yes, this materially reflects the financial position of this town," and that is all a financial statement audit is.
It is interesting that on the bottom, at the end of all of our audits, it has said in the years past that we need more checks and balances because they're small. So that actually kind of applies. My second question is, is it the, is it the finance officer's duty to know if federal taxes have to be paid on payable, or if they are allowed to?
It is absolutely that person's duty, absolutely.
And you're saying it was actually, earlier you said it was done, what, twice?
It was done right, it was done right. So they, they have figured out how much accrued vacation they had, which was like $26,000. They gave him 23 plus, and withheld 36 plus, they said. And then, the gentleman came back and said, "I don't want your federal taxes withheld." So they gave him his federal taxes, so he got his entire, let's say, $27,000 in accrued paid vacation, accrued vacation. He got the whole $27,000 with no taxes withheld, but it was done in two transactions. Was the first one canceled? I thought what I saw was that there was another deposit, direct deposit for the taxes that he wanted.
You know, I'd have to look.
I'm pretty, I was thinking that's the way I saw it, because they were paying direct deposit.
Yes.
So the first time it was done right, comes back and says, "I don't want it." And so there was another direct deposit with a difference, as I remember in the records that I've saw. The bottom line was, got the whole $27,000, and absolutely, your finance officer...
Sure enough, that's been...
Absolutely.
So was it against the law to not?
IRS rules, I guess, sir. I mean, I, I tell you there's rules, but if you're not doing what the IRS says, I would say that, yeah.
Okay. My third question, you might be more for our manager. When we look at the files that are missing and the backup from January to June, obviously the difference in theirs when we decided not, decided not to renew the manager's contract, that's the importance of why we picked those dates to look at backups and in between. If we were considering that maybe they were only personal files that were deleted, hasn't there been a case, weren't we looking for the closed session minutes from the June 2017 meeting that pertain to this exact thing of paying out the manager in the closed session where they discussed it was a one-time thing, never again? We couldn't find the closed session minutes now, but we went back and looked at the December backup, and they were there.
Is that right?
So I think that is a very specific example of files that were closed session minutes that pertained to all this that were deleted.
That's a felony. There was no closed session or open session where it was discussed. It was an email string from the finance officer to the entire board.
Okay.
So there was no official action.
But were there closed sessions? No matter what was in those closed session minutes, were there closed session minutes in December that were no longer there in June?
Or what you're talking about, were those kind of the backup documents, are you knowing that?
I'd have to check. I don't want to speak out of turn. But I know that the particular discussion about paying the manager in 2017 never came before this board publicly or in a closed session, at least there was no minutes that reflected that. We actually found an email string where it was among the board members and the mayor at the time about that. And the finance officer.
The minutes, to this day, say that they're still sealed. So that's why I wanted to find those minutes, to look them up, and we weren't able to find them. They're not there now, and I feel like...
Well, that'd be one of the things that you would, I mean, you would be able to find when you pull back everything that was deleted, then you'll be able to see if they were or they weren't. And that's why the recommendation was, and then you will decide if you want to pursue any other actions.
One more question for you that deals with the timeframe, I think you said it was going to be about six months from when we looked at the number of files on the backup versus the number of files that were on the server at the time when the administration changed? And you said that there was 100 and some thousand?
119,000, do you mind?
And that was a matter of six months, right?
From January to June 10.
June 10. So if, did we look at any other periods of backups that took place in between those two dates? I'd be curious to know if all the files that were lost were lost in the last day, apparently a lot of things were being removed, versus if the files were removed over a period of time from January to June? But either way, it's something we need to look into, so thank you.
Mr. Rollins restored the backup from February 1, March 1, April 1, May 1, and June 10. And he hasn't had a chance to analyze what that might tell you. Did I say that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Even if it was all personal files, let's go in. Are you allowed to delete personal files from the town server?
Via attorney question?
Or if it's on the town server?
It is public records.
It's against public records. And it's, you're not allowed to delete public records, correct?
Correct.
That's a good point, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Anybody else? I see he put glasses on.
Mr. Rollins, no reflection on you, a bad year, and I look forward to working with you on opportunities and the next steps that are provided before us today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11B, discussion of the pink wig purchasing and town radar signs.
Well, actually, before we go there, do we need to make 11A? And she suggested we take a deep dive, Mr. Rollins, do we need action to allow you to do that, or do you...
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, I mean, certainly don't have to make the decision tonight. You can talk about it, you can reconvene another meeting, it's really whatever the pleasure of the board. You have the facts, but they've been presented by an outside third party, and so it's up to you and the board to decide what you want to do.
Does it need a motion, or...
I think it needs to be a motion. Whatever you want to do.
So I move that Mr. Rollins be able to pursue the investigation started by Ms. Stackwood, to continue to obtain all records that might be missing from the town, and to... Is there anything else that you, Mr. Rollins?
No disrespect, Councilman Hampton, but that's a little ambiguous, pursuing an investigation. I mean, I don't have the time unless I'm a full-time investigator.
I'm going to do a lot, pursue it through Ms. Woods, or...
Again, that is y'all's prerogative. If you want Ms. Woods to dig deeper, then I can engage in soliciting an agreement from her, which I would need to bring back to y'all if it exceeds the current budgeted funds under auditing services, or if you want to use a forensic IT firm, I need to solicit bids under our current purchasing policy, so...
Would it be better then for you to speak with her, bring back, because I think Ms. Woods is going to probably also give us a recommendation for an IT firm, and to bring those things back, and we just approve them.
I can bring back...
But we are meeting for the, when is the...
On the 8th.
Still online, almost.
Yeah.
We can find a special call meeting to...
Is there some motion that you can help me with that would help me? I mean, I could ask him like that.
Is there something we can put together where we give Mr. Rollins correction to work with Ms. Woods? Please allow them to do a payout, her, our policy of a certain number without going over that. At the same time, if she thinks it's going to go past that number, then she needs to bring something back to us, and we'll approve that later, but that can at least get the investigation started and help Mr. Rollins pinpoint what needs to be investigated while at the same time we're getting a potential, well, he has to do the bid for the firms that can go do the deep dive in the front and the...
Now, with those bids, and this is about to help us out here, with getting bids for places, especially on a service like this for a year, you want somebody really good, do we still have to do the putting out bids, or are we able to go some different bids? So...
Yes, sir.
So can we just vote on that? Can you go ahead and put it out for bid?
That would be, that would be one thing you could vote on, and then you could make a recommendation that I engage Greg Isley and Associates, which is Ms. Woods' firm, to get a proposal together to look at the other side of what y'all want looked into. And you know, give us some time to, for her firm to put together a proposal for that, and give me some time to get some ideas of what we're looking at for forensic auditing firms. But I believe, the numbers I'm hearing is going to be right teeter tottering along the formal bid process, so it's going to take some time to engage the forensic auditor, because we have to follow the come-on purchasing laws. I think, I know where you're coming from, the intent that we're trying to do, if I may, I think maybe the direction we need to get to, Mr. Rollins, is to, to keep, continue this deeper dive in this investigational assessment to include the IT forensic audit. Is that, is that general enough?
Let me see if I can take a sample this way, and stop me if it's wrong. So I move that Town Manager Charles Rollins put out for bid for the IT forensic audits, and to engage the firm Greg Isley and Associates to get a proposal put together to continue the investigation that Ms. Woods is already starting. Would that be sufficient?
Yes, sir. Do we need to put out for a bid, though? You absolutely have to put the forensic stuff out for bid. So we can't name the company to do a bid? No, sir. You have to absolutely, I have to advertise it, put it out for bid, solicit it, because it's going to be over the $30,000 more than likely mark, which is the mark, the line in the sand, if you will, when it comes to purchasing law for the state of North Carolina. It's not in formal bidding process, it goes to a formal.
Mason, did you get that?
No.
There's my motion.
Do we have a motion or have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second for the discussion?
Do you repeat the motion?
Yeah.
I move that Town Manager Charles Rollins put out for bid for an IT forensic audit, as well as engage Greg Isley and Associates to get a proposal put together to continue the investigation that Ms. Woods is starting.
I'm just going to say the firm names GWI.
GWI.
Taxing account.
Can we be that descriptive?
He's not naming who, someone from the three bids. He's saying for them to help with the process, I think is what you're saying, right?
Then that question...
You've got two different things here, Councilor, bear with me. You've got a motion that says for me to put out for bid and bring back to you the results and the recommended bidder for forensic accounting. The other part of that motion, as I understand it, is that you're directing me to engage with GWI to put forth a proposal to look at everything outside of the computer records.
Yes, that's what I understand.
And to bring back a proposal from them if it exceeds our current budgeted, we have a bucket of money for auditing services, which is in separate terms here, and we're nowhere near exhausted after the year, thanks to Ms. Luther's work, our audit was way less, the cost of it was way less than, than this projected due in the issue of questions. So there's some leftover funds. As long as I don't exceed those funds, I can engage them to have them take a deeper dive, if that's your direction.
That's my direction, I think that's what...
Then the attorney could curve that motion.
Thank you for the assist.
I'm sorry.
Further discussion on the motion in a second.
Mason, are we good? Who gives a second?
Mr. Rollins, you know, since we're just seeing this, if all of these things included here financially are added up, what would be the total of these errors, mistakes?
Mr. Mayor, I have no idea. I mean, I would say less than $50,000 for the, for the vacation and payments and...
Wes, what's the word, how much did you say, did you total?
Disregarding...
Of what we've heard here tonight?
Yeah, disregarding the federal taxes, I know the one payout was like $4,000, so if you take the others into account, max a 10. And that's disregarding the federal taxes, because I did not look at how much he has elected in W4 or anything.
So in total, it's $10,000?
Yes, in terms of the vacation, so forth, and payouts related to the vacation.
But he's asking totally, right?
Well, like I said, I can't even speak to the federal taxes, because I didn't look at the employees before.
Well, outside the taxes on that, it's $10,000 or less?
Yes, based, based on the items identified in here, yes.
These are all, this is $10,000 for a relatively small period of time, is that right? And these are all, this is ten thousand for a relatively small period of time, is that right?
Yes.
Well, it seems like it's a period of time from after the town manager had a close contact with him and continued until the time, the time he left. This is what it seems like to me, but. So during this investigation, were, was the town manager ever contacted and asked about these things?
Let me state this. I put in the audit report that it was a preliminary work. And I had from last week till now, I have documentation to support everything that's in my report. But I have not talked to, there was no time yet.
Okay, so he was not called, contacted.
You know that some of these things have been brought up and have had a.
That's the answer, and the answer is yes. I have not.
Was the finance director contacted about any of these payouts? Does if a simple explanation exists?
I don't know if the.
I'm not sure how simple, against if we violate a policy.
From a personnel perspective?
I move that Ms. Woods be about to finish her.
Sure.
I was just going to say, from a violation of a policy, I don't know how much of an accident that can be.
From the violation of what?
Other policies.
And your personnel policy.
So, so then you would say there's nothing in a personnel policy that would prohibit a town from having someone come and make a presentation, making all the indications and accusations that we've made here tonight? You don't think that violates a personnel policy?
You misunderstood what it said. And where I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is that particularly the first three items is in violation of a policy. And I don't know where an accident can happen to violate a policy. That's what I was getting to. But have I spoken to any of these departed employees?
No.
To answer your simple question.
Okay. So I guess we're indicating no one knows who the previous town manager is or the previous finance director was.
I think all of them who they are, but I was not about to put their names in public talk.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, you knew about a lot of these things. Did you reach out to them and ask about it?
I don't think it's appropriate to be speaking to this, which is why I haven't been speaking to it. But it sounds like there'll be plenty of time going forward to speak to them. So I'll be happy to answer that in future. Any other discussion?
I asked, he asked her, did she speak?
This is the discussion.
He asked her, did she speak to the former employees? And so I asked him because he knew about many of these topics.
I did not, I did not.
Discuss any of these?
No, I, no, I did not do an investigation.
I didn't ask, did you investigate? I said, have you talked to them? Because maybe you can give us a, an easy answer of how this was just an accident.
Yeah, I could, but I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate here at this time to do that.
But it's all public?
It is public.
It's public records. Why can't we know?
Because this could be moving toward a court case.
We've been asking you about some of these things for months. And, and we know you've had contact with them, and you have never brought to us any answers to any of these things. So you have had the opportunity to.
I've never been tasked with providing you answers to.
Not tasked. We've talked about it to you.
Yeah, you've talked about it. You've talked about it a lot.
So if you thought there was an easy answer and hey, why don't we just ask them? You've had that opportunity. You have their phone numbers.
These things, these things, are they specific things? No, I have not.
Yes, you have. We've talked about this around about these files that are missing yesterday.
I've heard you all talking about it.
And you have their phone numbers.
Closed session, and you have their phone number?
No, you don't. I don't have any. No. You think you gave us your phone number?
You don't have the previous finance, you don't have the previous employees?
I deleted all of them from my phone immediately.
Okay, so you did have them deleted.
Mayor Sessions, during your time.
Look, this is not an investigation of me.
It's a discussion.
This is not a discussion. This is a discussion of your motion.
Well, you could have asked your questions about the investigation during the questioning time.
I didn't ask her anything. I asked Mr. Rollins a question.
Okay, but you're asking your questions now, but now we can't discuss your questions.
I'm not asking any more questions. I asked her.
But you did, and you didn't do it during the discussion time.
I asked Mr. Rollins a question. She stood up and approached the microphone.
So Mayor Sessions, you asked her about communications that she may have had with him. And I think as the mayor, for a little bit of transparency, we just want to know a few things from you. I mean, if we're going to get ready to make this motion to do more investigation, if you're saying it's a little premature, by all means, you know, pipe up a little bit. So you were there a lot during the final days.
If you understood what I'm saying, it sounds like I've knocked up enough.
Is it possible that Mayor Kurtum didn't make it the devil and moderate while we have a discussion? Because since you're engaging.
No, it is not.
You have to do that for a role.
Well, I do not.
Yes, you did. It did. For a book.
It's here for a book.
How much time did you spend with Mr. Rollins on the last day?
I stayed until the end, until we left.
Until we left.
Do you know what he was deleting?
I came downstairs and told y'all what he was moving. You know that.
Did you?
I, I will not sit here and be interrogated. I will not.
Well, you could clear things up for everybody right now. There's nothing, nothing, there's nothing wrong. This is a perfect opportunity to press talk.
No. No.
Because a lot of us have been curious about it.
I'll speak to the record when there's a record.
Well.
And it's not like there'll be one.
So if you wouldn't mind telling us, it seems like there is some claims that a lot of documents are missing at Town Hall. Did you notice documents missing at Town Hall?
Wait a minute. That's, this is not right.
I'm not answering this question.
It's a legal issue. You're drilling this kind of like in a court.
Thank, thank sir.
You're taking it to court. You need an attorney.
It's not important.
I would stop it. I would stop it.
But we said a box.
Thanks, sir.
It's not right.
Hey, folks, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
That's it.
If not, I'll call a question.
I have just one thing.
The discussion that we're talking about is the motion that I made was for investigation. From what I understand from Mayor Sessions, that may be premature. So every time we try to ask questions about it, you say we can't discuss it. From what I recall, I think at one point in a discussion with Janelle, there's nothing to come right or wrong, but I think that you said that you had spoken with an attorney and that you didn't even need to come to the meetings anymore. So I'm getting concerned that you're not taking part in this. If there's things that you do not know or know as a mayor who owes a duty to the town, we would like to have that especially.
For right now, we're the ones that are going to have to make votes. Do we want the investigation together? And that's on the five of us. So we need to make that motion and make that vote, and then we'll move forward, and all that will come to the surface.
Like I said, if Mayor Sessions wants to say anything that would stop us from doing that, I'll open the hearing.
I do have one question. So your motion is going to have part A, part B, kind of like Mr. Rollins said. And we're square on that, Mason?
Yeah.
And you second it, so?
Could you repeat the motion?
No.
No, have the court repeat the motion?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Clark, could you please repeat the motion?
Well, I got the first part of the motion, which is to put out a bid for all of, for IT forensics to get a proposal together to continue the investigation proposed by Mrs. Wood.
The second act was that he would work with Ms. Woods for further investigation within the funding available.
Deeper, deeper.
They would take a deeper dive and use the funding that's available, that is available, currently available.
Any other questions about the motion?
I'm just, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for it, and I'm hoping that all this is for not, we're wasting money looking at this, that things go forward. So I, I'm hopeful. So that's.
All right, we'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion, please.